I'm going to grant us a credit when we know for real, these guys said 70 percent. We were even bargaining for 50 percent savings in going to LED. They didn't even want to talk about it. But once we contacted Tallahassee and let them know about energy savings and all those things that they talk about in Washington, they came to the table. And now they're talking about 50 percent savings. So I encourage the CDD to do it also. And if you want to do it as a trial project, you've got Umtine Lights and Gateway Greens along Gateway Greens Drive and West Links Drive that we're switching our lights over. We'd love to have you look at not only these gentlemen, but others. Because there is some engineering that has to be done to be able to convert the lights over from the halide to the LED. So I'd encourage that.
Hold on a minute, Ed. Are we on air?
No.
We're recording, but we're not able to broadcast until the moment. Just can you hold off for just a second? Are you expecting that we will be able to shortly?
I can't answer that. Are we upgraded? It says on air. I don't... We'll try.
Please proceed.
My personality caused it. Going on, the other one you have on the agenda, the issue about the soccer and the flag football, and I'm not aware of what's going to happen or what's going to be talked about on there. But I've got a couple of concerns, at least on behalf of the residents of Gateway Greens. We would like to have a complete, full, transparent understanding of who is using this field? What percentage of residents, of kids, of Gateway residents are using that field as opposed to kids that are outside this community? Because we're looking at talking about a capital expenditure of several tens of thousands of dollars that have to be made. I think our residents don't have a real problem in subsidizing those kids and families of residents of Gateway. But those that are participating and living outside Gateway, that's a different story. I think we need to be looking at some surcharges and serious surcharges. Second of all is if that is the discussion, would also like to know, will the supervisors be making contact with Lee County to find out what the options and alternatives are for Lee County coming in, since there is a percentage, and I don't know what that is, I've heard all kinds of numbers, I'm going to guess 50 percent, maybe a little bit less, of outside residents using that field? Well, if that's the case, why can't Lee County Parks and Rec help participate in this capital investment we have to do to replace these lights? So I would like to know if the board would assign either a supervisor, well, you can't do it in groups, but a supervisor to make contact with Lee County and see if we can negotiate a deal to where Lee County comes in and helps participate in the cost of this major capital improvement. Going on, what was the second?
Pond Standards.
Pond Standards. Two weeks ago, I made a presentation on behalf of the Pond's work group. Have not yet heard as to when we're going to have that workforce work task committee meeting. Do we have a date in our near future?
If we do, we'll let you know. Go on, next item.
Next item.
Utility Interruptions.
Utility Interruptions. Thank you. Last week, or a week ago, and again today, we incurred a situation here in Gateway where a main line break occurred. And in the particular case of the one last week, we had residents shut down for about eight, nine hours of losing water. Staff went out and did the notification of the boil notices and that type of stuff. But today at our HOA meeting in this very room, a resident came in and was very concerned that they weren't aware of what happened. Primarily, she was one who had rented to another group or another party, and they had four kids living in the house. Mom was away and they're homeschooled, or however you do that these days. And they didn't have any water, but they didn't know what to do. My suggestion would be that not only for Gateway Greens, but for all of Gateway, that if there is a way that we could figure out the names, and I don't know that you can mandate it, you certainly can request it, if we can get the names of the management companies and the presidents of every association that makes up Gateway, and I believe there's 62, 63 of them, to where we can make contact with them when something like that happens, we can go. Now, I know in this particular case, Scott and Melissa and Terry, they were on me real quick and let me know. My only problem was I was on the golf course. It was big bets, so I wasn't going to leave the golf course for that. But if we can get to the people that are impacted by these situations where we're going to shut off the water, I think that would help in addition to putting out the boil water notices, just to give them a heads up of what's going on. And I think this isn't the first this is going to be happening. We're dealing with an aging infrastructure, and I'm surprised it hadn't happened more often. Count, I thought there was one more.
You used soccer?
Soccer, yeah. Ponds.
That's the three I had. You said you had a fourth.
Well, the fourth was the lighting side, must have covered them all. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
That's all.
Holy cow. All right. How are you doing? We're finished with audience public comments. Next item on the agenda. Is the Sherman Soccer Field Soccer League, dah dah dah, are the folks that you wanted present here to talk to us about the soccer league?
They're here, yes.
I'm very happy to talk to the people who are present, but probably not all of them. The owner of the GSA is not here.
He is here.
I almost told you're out of the country.
I'm no, no.
From Scott. Scott said you're out of the country.
Would you please all come to the podium?
I didn't see you at the back there.
You can't hide in the back. You've got to come to the podium.
So the answer to your question is yes. I'm very happy that everybody there is here.
Are you representing everybody?
I am representing Gateway Soccer Association. I'll let the gentleman from Flag Football have their conversation. Yeah, I'm Mark Allison. I am the league director of Gateway Soccer Association, here on behalf of the board to answer any questions I believe they have.
Well, let me start, but I'm sure that I'll have some help along the way. The Gateway service to CDD is very pleased and proud to provide the five soccer fields that we have next door. And we know that they are used a lot. What we don't know, and I'm not sure that it's terribly important, is the residents of those youngsters who play and the coaches. But we are going to have to make some difficult decisions in the near future regarding the lighting of those fields, or one of the fields, or two of the fields, or something. And we need some conversation with some experts, you, as to what we can do to minimize the cost and keep the soccer and flag football still going.
Okay. I know when I was requested to make this meeting, one of the questions posed was the feasibility of working without lights, and also the percentage of Gateway residents versus non-Gateway residents. So I did some research into that for you, so that I would have some accuracy in the statistics. And also trying to be objective, looking at the feasibility of how we could function without lighting. Obviously, the way the league is set up currently, we utilize the fields twice a week midweek for practices. And that approximately is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on a Tuesday and Thursday night during our season. And our seasons, we have two seasons a year, which run about 10, 11 weeks total. So 20, 22 weeks a year, we're using the fields. And we're using the lights only on the midweek practice nights, because obviously our main games that we play are Saturday mornings, so there's no use of the lights there. I tried to look at the feasibility of seeing whether or not it could be used during the weekend, which would be the only other times we would have no use of the lights. But as you can appreciate, in order to do that, we would have to sort of look at it doubling up on a Saturday morning or something with practice prior and games after. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is find the most practical solution for parents to be able to get to the fields and also have children in a situation where they're not playing for an extended period of time when the weather is perhaps not as conducive for running for two hours or an hour and a half, or whatever it might be. So that's always lent us back to why it's so feasible and more convenient to work the midweek practice games. Looking at trying to get started sooner than later, so moving the practices earlier to 5:00 o'clock. Again, we run into that situation where parents are working and they have schedules. And ultimately, the schedule that we have in place has been working very well and seems to work very well for the children, the parents, and everybody involved. So the functionality of working without lights would ultimately end up, if that decision was made, it would mean that we would have to, it would impact the league. It would mean that parents would decide that it wouldn't be practical to be involved in. And the end result, we would have children and parents dropping out of the league, and it wouldn't be, it couldn't be as utilized as much as it is now. I mean, that ultimately is what would happen, having talked to some of the parents already about the feasibility of working without a midweek practice. With regard to the non-Gateway residents, I think Scott knows as well, we send in a report every year with the percentage or a number of residents. We run reports for the district to be able to determine. Fluctuates between 40 and 50 percent of non-Gateway residents in our league numbers. But bearing in mind, as you all know, that there is an increased fee that we levy on those non-Gateway residents already, $20 a family per year, on top of what the Gateway residents pay to be able to cover the differences between what the residents are paying versus the non-Gateway residents who are not part of the CDD. So we're already paying that straight to the district as part of an agreement that we have in place. Other than that, I mean, I really don't have anything more to offer.
Well, let me ask you one question.
Sure.
I believe that we have five fields out there.
Correct.
And I believe all five of them have lights for them.
Correct.
Is there any, have you given any thought to only using two fields with lights instead of five?
No, I haven't. The reasoning being is that the way the field structure is set up, we, the five fields are five adult-sized, or four adult-sized fields and one smaller field. We then paint them to accommodate the younger ages. So even though we may have one adult-sized field, we have three smaller fields painted on there, because we have the smaller children, obviously, aren't playing on the bigger field. The point being is that as we, in order to make that function, we would have to limit the amount of ages that we would have playing, because we have, we go all the way from three to 16-year-olds. And the 16-year-olds are playing on the largest field. The three-year-olds, obviously, are playing on the smallest field. The point I'm trying to make is that we are using every single field. There's a total of 11 actual fields that we use out there on a practice and a game day. And we have, this season, we have close to 80 teams out there, all trying to practice twice a week and play on Saturdays. If we went down to two fields, we would never be able to get anywhere near the numbers. It would just, we're utilizing everything to the full extent already, to the point where we're actually limiting registrations on certain age groups, because we cannot take anymore. So I don't know, again, we've tried to look at the opportunity to try and work around that, the situation or the feasibility, and it's, as it stands right now, that there's nowhere we could take away from what we already have without diminishing the number of registrations and saying we have to take less children. Margaret?
Do you think that if you went up on your registration fee for non-residents to $25, that that would be something that would be feasible?
I mean, yeah. To answer that question, I think that there's an understanding that an increase in the fee would bring some, you know, any increase in the fee is going to have kickback. You're always going to have somebody that can't afford it. Currently, our fees for Gateway resident, non-Gateway residents is 110. It would then become 115 per season. Is that going to deter possibly a percentage? I don't know how much that would stop people from doing it. But I mean, it's only realistically going to bring in, you know, that $5 increase, you're going to probably be looking at, I don't know, less than $10,000 per annum that you're going to increase. It won't be anywhere near that much, I don't think, because we generally pay, I want to say, $10,000.
How did you come up with that figure?
I'm thinking of-
As I'm sitting here doing some math, how many kids are from out of the district?
Out of the district, we have 300 families a year.
Okay, 1,500 bucks.
Okay.
Okay? That's not going to solve our problem. That is correct. I do math, so that's not the solution.
So?
Margaret?
You said you have 80 teams, is that correct?
That's how we have this season, yes. Spread over those 11 fields.
This may not be germane, but maybe it is. Are there other soccer fields close by?
Yes, obviously, there is. JetBlue has them, but the problem with-
Where, please?
JetBlue Stadium has soccer fields out there. The problem you run into is there are more programs than there are fields. That's always been the problem. That's why you can speak to Mr. Connell about it. There are constantly people asking to utilize the fields already, and they're just, you know, not putting words into his mouth. But the decision I'm aware of is that, you know, the concern is overuse of the fields and maintaining the fields. It could be an opportunity for increased revenue if we are looking at trying to find a way. Where I know there's men's leagues that used to be here, I know there's women's leagues that are looking to utilize the fields too. It's a decision that has to be made to the district as to whether or not you can balance the maintenance and maintaining the fields as they currently stand versus the overusage. But there is that opportunity that I know of many leagues that would like to be out here in the off-seasons when the flag football and soccer aren't using them especially.
Can you tell me how many, how many fields are there at JetBlue Park?
I believe there's six adult-sized fields. And they only utilize three of them currently, and the other three they have as an overspill for parking and all kinds of things.
Scott, are we in line with the fees that, or do you know, with fees that say JetBlue charges? Are we, how?
Can I answer that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Sorry.
You can answer.
Slightly different situation at JetBlue. It's a competitive soccer program that works out of JetBlue with Lee County Parks and Recreation. So competitive programs typically charge five to six times more than we do, because they're targeting players and children who are going to make a career out of soccer. So their annual fee and what they're charging the parents is significantly larger than what we are, because we're trying to introduce the sport to the children as opposed to running a competitive program. So I don't know if that answered your question.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Mary?
Yes.
Gary?
No, Rod, he's armed. I've seen his papers.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Mark. I presume John's with you.
Yeah, John's at the back there, yeah.
Welcome, John.
Hi. Sorry, just to, sorry. Just quickly, with Mark there with the JetBlue.
Yes.
As of four years ago when they first started, oh, sorry. I will just quickly, as of four years ago when I started there, the deal was done, that it was nought dollars. They didn't actually charge the organization any dollars at that field. So it was just Lee County didn't, yeah. So that was it. But in light of what you were saying before, the $20, $25 per hour, whatever, the charge of it here is kind of in line of places like Kelly Road, et cetera, like that. But actually, at that facility there, I can obviously only know that that was what was done right at the beginning, when that competitive club went there, because I started it. The agreement was that they didn't pay, we didn't pay $1 for that field at that time, which they vacate in December, the middle of December, they vacate that area and then go to Bayshore, because the baseball team come in. Then they don't return again until June, June of that year. So up from August, the beginning of August through to the middle of December, those teams are on there, as I say, four years ago. I don't know what the deal is now, but generally, what they said at the beginning generally stands in place, that that competitive club didn't pay a dollar for the fields, and then they vacate in the middle of December.
Thanks, John.
The bottom line of that is that all of the fields are full. Is that so?
Well, when I was speaking to Jeff and that before originally, when they had the three fields, north and east, sorry, east and west, that the reason they didn't have any on the other side, because they just didn't, there wasn't another organization that could use it. It was just, they had enough teams for those three fields. Now, they are designated for three for other fields there. There are other, there are able to be done. Now, when it's like anything, if they're not getting used, they're utilizing for something else, whether it's car parking on days, or whether it's like an event that's going on or whatever like that. But they are, they were designated for that originally. If we had enough teams that could utilize the entire six fields, that would have been, that would have been available.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that, John, and welcome, by the way. There's a couple of things I want to say before we go into a dialogue, if that's okay. And I want to say this to my colleagues on the board about the media coverage on this. NBC contacted me yesterday. I didn't contact them. And they asked me what my position was on the floodlights. I don't know why they would have contacted me, but my policy is to respond if I can and get out in front of a story rather than to be misconstrued. That's why I met them. And also, I've been contacted by the local media here, which is the Gateway Sun. And I want to read this statement, because it's a preempt, it's going to preempt what we talk about.
Is this your statement that you-
This is my statement that I've made to the Gateway Sun, and it's relevant, Bill, before we get into a dialogue. NBC2 appeared to be focused only on the floodlight issue. I told NBC that the floodlights are getting old and are expensive to replace or repair. The adopted 2016 budget provides for a five-year capital expenditure of $479,000, just for the floodlight repair and replacement. Also, the annual budgeted utility cost for operating the floodlights is $79,500, budgeted for next year versus 65 this year. That's a lot of electricity. These are significant amounts of taxpayers' money that I'm responsible for. I want to make sure that everybody's aware of these figures and to review the current board policy before we just forge ahead with this program, particularly the capital investment program. I'm always trying to find ways to economize and check unnecessary spending. I want to make sure that we explore various ways to reduce floodlight costs by way of grants. We're already talking about the possibility of a grant. LED lighting, we've talked about. Hourly fees, Cape Coral charged $35 an hour for, the city of Cape Coral charged $35 an hour for floodlight time versus $10 for non-floodlight time. Also, the possibility of smartphone remote controlled timers, that management can switch floodlights off from remote points. Those seem to be good ways to tackle this, rather than just not having floodlights. I don't think not having floodlights is the way to go. We have to work with you. I think it's the right thing to keep them, but we have to figure out ways to economize.
Sure.
That's my position on this. My goal is not to take away from any successful programs that you guys are running, and you deserve credit for what you're doing for the kids, but we have to contain costs on behalf of all Gateway residents who are heavily subsidizing this facility. All of Gateway residents, except Pelican Preserve, are paying for those soccer complexes. And I, and I'm responsible for all of them, not just the parents who have kids playing there. So you're being subsidized to the tune of, in 2015, $233,000 it cost the residents to maintain that soccer field, which is principal landscaping, maintenance, staff and floodlighting. The user fees from Gateway and non-Gateway residents from the programs don't even flow into this district. They flow into the third-party organizations like you and Flag Football. So getting extra revenue from non-residents doesn't benefit us, it benefits you. We're getting a flat rent from the Gateway Soccer Association. We, in 2015, we received on our books a flat rent of $25,000 from the GSA and from Flag Football. The contract that's currently up for renewal cites exactly what that rent is, and it's roughly 10 percent of what it's costing us to maintain it. I personally, and I can't speak on behalf of my colleagues here, but I would like to have the opportunity to discuss the current contractual arrangement that this district has with GSA and the Gateway Flag Football League. You both do a good job. You provide a worthwhile community service. I'd like to work together in a more transparent partnership, where all revenues and all costs are transparent. As it turns out at the moment, and we had this discussion when you and I met in January, Mark, that we are transparent about what it's costing us, but it's not totally transparent from your side, what revenues have been generated by our operation. And this is just business I'm talking about. And your predecessor, the Christian Soccer Association contract, we had, we had the ability to look at the financials. And I asked you that question in January, and that you weren't prepared to disclose that, unless you change your mind. Have you changed your mind on that?
Not as of yet, no.
So without knowing anything about the revenues and the little bits and pieces that I've made notes from our meeting, I just want to recap them. There are 800 kids roughly in the program, 500 of which are from Gateway and 300 are from outside Gateway.
Yep.
That's 38, 62 percent split. And each of those children, their families are paying $100 per season, which is $200 per year.
Yes.
For each child, multiplied by 800. So your gross revenue is $160,000. Is that, am I in the right ballpark?
Yeah, I mean, we have discounts that we give to siblings and Gateway residents, et cetera. And bearing in mind, to answer one thing, the additional revenue that we charge for non-residents does go directly to the district. It does not come to us. We pay a levy to you every year that comes straight off that, that I send in a report. So that additional cost does go directly to you, along with the field rental costs, obviously, that we pay as well.
Thanks for clarifying that. Gary made the point that that's not going to make a big difference, you know, the extra, if we get something extra from non-residents. I'm more interested in the, in the business arrangement between the district and yourself, where we're providing the concession and we don't make anything on the concession. This is for your use, okay?
Right.
So I presume you're, I presume you're making money on the concession. You've got $160,000 coming in from family user fees, and we're not sharing in that. What we're doing is putting out the cost of $233,000. And I would like to have a more transparent arrangement and put into our new agreement that you, if we request it, you're prepared to disclose your financials, so we can talk openly about sharing revenues and costs. And I want to know why you wouldn't be interested in that.
Well, because I think that there are certain aspects of running the business that are solely our business. And if you're asking us to pay a certain rental for the fields and asking us for other fees that we have to incur and pay to, or should I say, levy towards the people being part of our program, then as far as I'm aware, that seems to be your obligation to ask us to do this. This is what our rental fees are. This is what it is. And we provide you with that. Whether we have to then turn around and tell you how much we spend on uniforms and how much we spend on referees and how much we spend on line striping, for me, that means it's really no relevance to you whatsoever.
Could I jump in just a second?
One last comment, please, Gary.
I want you to have the final say. But please understand this. I'm sorry, what did you say? Hold on, Bill. Please understand, okay? We're looking here at your contribution towards this 230-plus thousand-dollar cost a year is $16,835. But you've just agreed, you may not like that word, but you've made the statement publicly at the stand, that your income is in excess of $160,000 gross.
Gross.
Therefore, you're remitting to us only 10 percent of that gross. 90 percent is someplace out there that we have to look and say, wait a minute. First of all, with $230,000 worth of contributions by the public of Gateway, you're refusing to show us, and if I were in your case, if I felt as strongly as you seem to be reacting regarding this, that you had all these other costs, that the net would be something that would be very defensible for you, but you don't seem to be that defensible.
I think that- I think the, the feeling I'm having is that I came here to discuss the floodlights and that's what I thought it was. And now I'm feeling that I'm having to have my business and my finances up for discussion. And I didn't realize that was what I would be doing. So I'm a little bit defensive simply because this was not what I was expecting to be doing right now.
But from a business point of view, can you understand our concern?
Absolutely. But you also have to stand, I'm paying what you're asking me to.
Uh, Mark.
You got it.
Uh, two, two, two meetings ago, I asked, I, I said, look, the contract's coming up with GSA. It's coming up, is it November fifteenth or November thirtieth? And I've been keen for some time to have this discussion. It's not just about floodlights, at least from my standpoint. I'm concerned about four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars with the floodlight cost. That's, that's another issue.
Right.
But I am concerned that we get this right because you're saying we charge you rent. Now, for me to say, well, look, sixteen thousand isn't enough. Let's pick another number. I'm, we, we, I'm absolutely blind. I can, I can't just say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna triple it. I have no basis upon which to assess a rent or even discuss a rent with you because I have no idea what the numbers are. You know what our numbers are. And it's, it's, you know, it's difficult for, for, at least from my standpoint, I'm going blind just to be able to say, well, we, we think we need to get a lot bigger rent. And then you're gonna turn around and say, well, I can't afford that. And I, there's no point in us getting into this debate in a public forum now. What I would like to do is to, is to, is to have a disc, maybe not sign the contract just yet and have this discussion with you because
I'd be happy to do that.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm going blind and I don't want to be unfair to you. You're on a variable, your, your income's variable on the kids.
Correct.
Our, our expense, if we just charge a flat rent, then maybe, maybe what we cha, maybe what we charge should be variable with you. That's another way to look at this.
I have absolutely no problem having a second or third discussion about the agreement and everything else. And obviously be much more open-minded and happy to provide any questions or answers to any questions you have. Obviously, the circumstances standing here right now, being asked that direct question, my first reaction is no. But I'd be happy to further discuss it with you and hopefully get to, because ultimately, as you know, Rod, I'm all about trying to work with what we have to do here as a program and with you and what you need to, to provide as a district. I'm not trying to dig my feet into the, or heels into the ground.
And just, just before I finish my point on this, Billy, for me.
Please.
Um, I have discussed this at length and, and coming back to a Tinkles point. I've been, I've discussed this at length with the top management at Lee County now for the last six months, exactly how they go about organizing that, organizing the fox and rec. Some of the comments that John made, how they run the youth programs and I, I know how that works. I've discussed how we can possibly even get Lee County more involved in getting more, uh, diversified use of these fields. But the truth is at the moment, all our eggs are in two baskets pretty well.
Right.
And we're all, I'm responsible on behalf of all the residents poking out almost quarter million dollars of the year of costs. And we're putting all our eggs in two baskets and, and I just think we need a different business arrangement than getting sixteen thousand dollars rent. And, and it's not for me in a public forum to say, I think it should be double or triple or quadruple.
Understood.
Because we need to, we need to talk about this outside this meeting, in my opinion.
You've made some excellent points. I have one question that I'd like to ask before we close this off for now. You described what you do as a business. Now, do you run a five oh one C three? Do you, is this a for-profit business that you're running?
As I explained to, to Mr. Senior, um, I have several businesses of my own that I've run separately that, that are my personal businesses. And so when the situation arose where the Christian Soccer Association was stepping down, I stepped in purely on a temporary basis to, to help them out. And in doing so, put together a business as I had done prior, which was a pro, for-profit business. That's not, it's not a non-for-profit, um, category, wasn't what I did. The intention was never to become long-term, but then the Christian Soccer Association stepped down through my season. So I then became by default in, in charge of running the program. So I never changed anything because from my standpoint, I run businesses as a pro, for-profit in other circumstances. The actual terminology doesn't necessarily mean you're running away with millions of dollars. It's just the way you file taxes.
I didn't mean to infer that.
Thank you. Cause that's the, what can be misconstrued. And it, so to answer your question, yes, I am a for-profit business, not a non-for-profit. But that's just, it was just the circumstances at the time when I filed with the, the state to put a business name together.
Bill, I want to ask a question.
Please.
May I, may I discover one of these other, other businesses that you have, sir?
I'm in real estate. I'm a real estate appraiser and so.
Keep going. Real estate, that's it?
Real estate is what I've, I've got my businesses in. I'm a real estate appraiser by trade. That's what I do when I'm not standing here.
You'll, you'll be hearing some more, uh, from, uh, one of us or Mr. Scott Cowell. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I, may I just, uh, one last question? If we don't sign this contract for now, is this, is this going to be a detriment to you? If we, if we delay re-signing this agreement for the, for, at least for a short term, are you looking for this contract to be renewed?
No. I mean, y- yes, I want to continue, but no, if I'd want to sit down, I want to get it straightened out before we hand serve.
So your planning is not going to be severely affected in any way just because the contract's not renewed right now?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to talking to you.
All right, Rod, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Rod, we've got a breakdown of, of expenses here that, and, you know, I'm looking at this and I get going through the numbers, the hun, a hundred and seventy-five thousand here between, uh, landscaping, irrigation and electric. Um, but you're, you keep saying two thirty-three. So where's the, what, where's the difference?
Okay, uh, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is the, um, is the soccer complex cost, uh, for the year ending September the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. And it includes ninety thousand dollars of landscaping, twenty-seven thousand dollars maintenance repairs and sixty-five thousand dollars in utility services and twenty, twenty-five thousand in payroll.
So it's, it's the payroll and the repairs?
Yeah. And that payroll, by the way, is for two thousand and sixteen, the costs we've, we now have a recreation manager that's gonna take that two thirty-three up to two ninety-eight thousand.
I think, by the way, this thing should be a workshop. This, this is a major project.
It is, it is.
And it isn't something that we should just dump on one person to try to do all the work.
Now, the parks and rec, that would, that would include like pool?
No, the figures I'm giving you are soccer complex.
Or they're broken down.
The pool's separate.
Okay. Since I didn't have it in front of me, I was trying to make the numbers out.
Uh, is the Flag Football people attending?
They're here.
They're here. Because I, I believe you are a different category. You are a non-for-profit or at least you're filing for one, right?
Yes, um, we are a, um, a brand new board of, uh,
Can you please state your name?
Oh, sure. Uh, George Hurunka and Tim Miller, both with Gateway Flag.
George, will you spell your name for Diane?
Sure. H R U N K A.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um,
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. We, um, took over, um, from Ed this, this, this past summer. And we, we actually formed a brand new corporation. Ed, I believe, had it in LLC. So it was, it just, uh, behooved us to do that. There's a, um, a group of seven volunteers that serve at, as the Board of Directors, um, for Gateway Flag. We run this as a not-for-profit. We are in the process of filing the five oh one, which basically takes a long time to do it. It's just, uh, pounds of paperwork. Um, but, you know, we, um, we do operate that for a zero profit. Um, after the fall season, um, after, um, all is said and done, we're, we're gonna probably carry over maybe thirteen hundred dollars, which we'll actually invest in the spring. Okay, um, we currently have two hundred and twenty-five players. Um, of that, statistically, the past three or four seasons, about fifty to sixty percent are from Gateway. The ones that aren't part of the CDD, um, we pay an extra twenty dollars per person to the CDD for it, um, for, for their, uh, participation. Um, in terms of the fields, um, with, without this field, as well without a continuing contract, uh, we would have to cancel our spring season. Um, we are going to have our championships, um, on Friday night. And, um, then the Board of Directors will, uh, probably take about two weeks off and then we start preparing for spring again. Currently, we are there Mondays, Wednesdays, and then games on Friday nights. Um, all of our coaches and, and our Board of Directors are volunteers. We all have a full-time jobs. Um, so when we were looking at different types of, uh, possibilities to not use the lights, um, starting practice earlier really wouldn't be feasible. Um, I think that, that the league would, would actually collapse on that, uh, because of the lack of participation. Um, even right now, starting at six o'clock, we have trouble getting coaches there. We have trouble getting kids there. We have trouble getting referees there. Um, and, um, I mean, we, uh, I don't know.
Excuse me, just one second.
Sure, go ahead, sir.
How many total youths did you say that, that play, that are involved in the flag football?
Currently, this, this, this past fall season, uh, we had two hundred and twenty-five. And of that, one hundred and fourteen were from Gateway. Now, that being said, the past two fall seasons, fall seasons for us, um, even though it's football, um, typically is our slow season because a lot of the kids play Pop Warner football. And then the spring season for us is a larger season. Um, during the fall season, we currently have twenty-eight teams now. Uh, during the spring, we're probably looking at about thirty to thirty-four teams.
Now, do you use all five of our fields when you?
Uh, we typically use fields, we, we use soccer fields two, three and four.
Thank you. And that's Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
Uh, correct, sir.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I sat down with Ed Ryan about a month ago and we had a couple of hours discussing a lot of internet, so I'm, I don't want to go over the detail, but I just want to thank you for doing a really great job for the kids.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are you, uh, have you got problems with disclosing your financials?
Uh, not at all, no. In, in, in fact, I, we, um, actually contacted the Gateway Sun because, um, it was reported that, uh, our annual fee was, um, I think they said it was like thirty-eight hundred, whereas that's only a season fee. Um, I'm fairly certain that I can, uh, speak for Tim, that we want the parents to know that all of the funds are going back to the kids. Uh, we're not in it to make a profit whatsoever. Um.
Thank you. Very, I, I have no more questions.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I think we need a quick workshop.
I do too.
I think we need a quick workshop. What do you mean by quick? We can't even figure out one for our pod. Right now, we need to do some kind of action on this. This seems to be something that keeps getting delayed. And we've got some contract crises that are here that are running out in time.
We actually need the agreement. The, uh, uh, gentleman just asked a question about when we would need the agreement done. And our spring season does begin in March. However, two weeks from now, I have to start ordering a marketing, uh, material to actually go to the high schools here. And it's not only the participants here, the, uh, we have a bunch of referees who are high school age kids. Um, they're from the neighborhood. They, they either get volunteer hours. So they're here in, um, I mean, just the number of parents here on a Friday night bringing business into Gateway. Um, I don't think that's something that should be overlooked too.
Okay, so I'll ask the same questions I asked of Mark.
Sure.
So that if we delay executing a renewal of your contract for a month, is that going to have any effect on your planning?
Uh, yes, it will.
To what, to what extent is it gonna be a problem for you? Is it just because of floodlights? Is this the issue?
Um, actually, yes, because we, we
Is that the only issue?
Um, uh, that's the, um, only issue, correct, yeah.
Cause I, as far as I'm concerned, I, I think this whole discussion has got slanted towards floodlights on and floodlights. I'm more interested in the business arrangement than whether we have floodlights on or no floodlights.
Well, um,
I think we need floodlights. The kids need it. You need it. Mark needs them. We just need to make, we need to have more efficient way of handling the floodlights, LED.
Hold on, no, 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 we don't need to get into that right now.
That's my thought.
If
And, and, and therefore delaying the contract, delaying the contract wouldn't, I don't think, isn't gonna be i- it going to affect the floodlight decision because I don't think there's, there is a floodlight decision, not from my point of view anyway.
Pam, is that what she wants to say?
I just want to interject for a second.
Sure.
I thought, I heard you say that you needed to do this within a couple of weeks.
Uh, that's correct.
Because of your marketing.
Well, um, when, when we register kids, typically that's about a two-month process at least. And, um, since we took over during, during, uh, during the summer, we, we really haven't had time to go out there to the schools, introduce us. And as a result of that, after the season started, we typically received quite a few inquiries from parents saying, you know, can my child, um, still be registered? We, I'll probably turn down close to fifty people, um, just because of that. So we're, we're trying to get out in front of that right now. Let them know the date's coming up. And without having a contract in place, we can't have the date set. If, I mean, if I can make a suggestion maybe to keep the dialogue open on a new contract and just keep this current contract going through the spring season at least.
There's a question I want to ask Tony when the chairman's back with us. If you can just hold on.
Sure.
And Scott, uh, just a quick question. This is supposed to be due December tenth, twenty fifteen. Is that correct? On that memo?
Tony.
So the current contract expires in the November, it's twenty thousand, uh, two thousand and fifteen.
Well, this says that repaired design is out for bid now due December tenth, twenty six. So it's twenty fifteen?
Yes, thank you. I didn't know.
I'd like to, I'd like to continue while these are talking, but I remember. Your suggestion, your, your suggestion just there wa, was a good one, I thought. That's worth, worthy of us, may give us a way forward.
Okay.
The idea of continuing as we are through the spring season, knowing that we're, we're in discussion even though the contract, so, so this contract wouldn't be renewed at this time, but you'd be up, what were you suggesting?
It, well, it, it would be, uh, renewed during the spring season because if, if we cannot get that done soon, it is a disadvantage to ours. We have to cancel the season and you don't have the funds coming in.
Okay. Don't, don't want to do anything that's gonna screw you up. That's not, that's certainly not my goal. I just want to make sure that when, when we do have a contract, can we, from a legal perspective, can we, uh, can we continue as we are, even though the contract's expired?
If you want to, I guess the question is from the board versus to grant at least a one-month extension of this agreement in order to allow us to work on another thing. That's what the thought is, but I'm not sure what that gets for a level of certainty.
Yeah, that would not work.
Let, can I ask a question, please?
Sure, sir.
If we should, if we did renew the contract, but with the idea that you clearly understand that we, until we can have our necessary discussion as far as the lighting issue is concerned with that, I can't give you that guarantee, but I can, I could possibly give you the assurance that you're going to get that agreement renewed with, you're gonna need to know that there still is an open end to the lights issue. But I don't think that's going to be decided within a week or two.
But would, would you, um, in essence, uh, not come to some point where we wouldn't be able to use the lights during the spring season?
Oh, hold on. I think that the lights are usable at this time. And I think that we're not at a crisis-type situation that they wouldn't be able to use the lights in their current condition in spring, but I'm gonna defer to Scott for that. Are the, are the lights usable at this time?
Yes.
Therefore, there is nothing that you know of within the, the period of the next three to four months that will suddenly cause the lights to go out?
No, we're currently out for bid at this time.
Okay, I, I understand that, but you know what I'm asking, right?
And the answer to your question is the bids are due December tenth and hopefully the contracts will be let and start work after the first of the year within sixty days. So there'll be some work during the day, but I think they can keep the lights burning.
Thank you. Then what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion that, um, we do renew the flag football contract. All right? Immediately.
Same terms?
Same terms.
Is there a second?
I'll take it.
We have a second.
And that's my motion.
For clarification, the name of the entity is?
It's Gateway Flag Football Corporation.
Okay, it's the same entity as before or different?
It is slightly different.
I'd like to, um,
It's a different entity, clearly.
Yes. Yeah, the, the, the name is slightly different. The, um, entity, um, from last year is totally different, correct?
I'm gonna be asking if we can discuss this now and possibly amend it.
Sure.
And, and, and we have to be fair to the GSA as well, whose contract is also coming up, who also depend on the floodlights.
Well, you didn't hear my second motion, but go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Can we, can we, can we proceed with motion and second that's on the floor?
All right, Gary wants to separate them, but my sentiment is why don't we have, why don't we renew the contract for six months? Make it a six-month contract that gets you through, both parties through their spring and then gives us all time to take a deep breath and renegotiate something for the back end of two thousand end of two thousand and sixteen.
Will that get you through your, your time period? That's what we want here.
Yes, correct, sir.
So why don't we get a six-month contract going that for everybody, including GSA, floodlights included?
I'll, I'll go along with the six-month contract here, but I was going to actually give them your contract. Here's, let me tell you what my second motion is.
Can you hold on for just one second?
For you, yes. For anybody else, forget it.
Pam's been trying to talk to us now for some time.
Uh, well, the gentleman did ask for a six-month or a some four-month extension.
Right.
So instead of creating a new contract, why don't we just give them the extension of six months?
Because it's going to come right back to us before we, before we know it.
It will.
If we're going to do it...
I think when you hear my second part, you'll be okay.
Okay, and the, and the name change, so we can clean that up. Okay.
Okay, there's motion on the floor.
That's right, Margaret, I agree with you.
Motion on the floor to renew the flag football contract, uh, same terms for one year.
What can you, the new, the name is again?
Gateway Flag Football Corporation.
You'll hear me, you'll hear me. I think you'll be okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would just, I want to clarify, is it six months or a year?
It's a year.
Because I'm hearing, oh, for one year.
It's a year.
Okay.
Are you voting yes?
Yes.
Can I?
Just wanted to know.
That's five zero, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've, you, you've already...
Rod's backing up, hold on.
No, I want to make this clear. The contract, it is going to be the same, exactly the same contract as we, as is expiring now?
That's what we said, except for the name of the...
Uh, changing the name.
Same terms.
Is there a requirement, if we request it, for the, for the party to disclose their financials in this agreement today, Tony?
Um, real quickly.
They've agreed they can, it's five oh one.
Would you, would you agree to that if we make that as part of the, part of this motion?
Uh, yes, uh, that is fine with us. I'm assuming they don't have to be audited? I mean, it, it can just be like, like a QuickBooks-type generated?
Provide that within a period of fifteen days.
You can give us a pro forma, right?
Okay, yeah.
That's all I'm interested in.
Yep.
Thank you.
Will that be okay with you?
Fifteen days, financials, okay. We're done with, we are done with flag football.
Can you provide it in fifteen days?
Um, can I have till the end of December?
Yes.
Okay.
You okay?
Delighted to say, we are finished with flag football, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now, the second motion is for the soccer. Um, I would like to also look towards the soccer with the same type of situation, but not until we've actually seen their financials. And if they can provide the financials within thirty days, gentlemen?
Are you asking me to provide you with financials in the next thirty days for my business?
For this particular business, not your appraisal business, it'd be fine. Since I'm in real estate, I'd be interested, but I'm not...
I'm not, I'm not willing to do that as we stand right now. I thought we were going to go on to another...
Okay, then, but fine, I was trying to, to expedite things for you, but that being the case.
Then may I suggest that we renew the GSA contract as it stands for six months, to give us a chance, to give them a chance to plan their spring season, which I don't want to destroy in any way, but give us all a chance and, and to talk with Mark separately, and see what, see how we can get a better arrangement going after the six-month contract has expired.
Uh, that I won't go with, because then it becomes this one-on-person with this and at their particular time. I want a time constraint, I want a date certain, and I want it to be something that, since this issue, and we're talking with a profit-type center, I want all of us to be involved in this type of thing.
Not just me, I want all of us to, we have a workshop, we can do our workshops.
Fine. Why can't you do that within thirty days?
You're asking me to provide you the financials that I don't want to provide, that's...
Okay, so he doesn't want to provide any financials?
But it, but we haven't...
Outside of this situation, I'd be happy to sit down with all of you and discuss what you're looking for, but you're not going to hand over my complete set of business financials to you, and I'm not willing to do that.
Okay, because of the sunshine laws, it isn't something that we can just kind of meet as a body that's not in a situation of a workshop.
Okay.
So having said that, in that workshop, if we try to cram our schedules to try to accommodate you, are you willing to do a little bit of cramming and be prepared at that time in thirty days to be able to get fully into this discussion, which means bring your financials?
How many times does he have to say you're going to do it?
If we, if we...
I'm not willing to vote for it.
If we're...
How many, will you vote for six months renewal?
No.
You're going to, you're going to shut down the soccer program? Is that what you're willing to do?
I think, I, I'd like...
I think it's time to put some feet to the fire.
Yeah, let, let me, let me say this, please. Um, my, my thought is that we need to make sure that the program continues in a seamless fashion. I think it's important for the families and for the kids, and we don't want to, we don't want to do anything here today that's going to disturb that for the spring season. However, uh, and, and for that reason, I would be in favor of, of signing a six-month contract, because, I don't think it's fair just to hit you with this today, Mark, and hold your gun, uh, gun to your head, that's not what's, it doesn't feel right to me.
You're going to make a motion of that effect?
But I'd like to extend your contract six months on the understanding that you're willing to sit down and discuss with me or other members of the board about a new arrangement going forward.
Absolutely.
That's what I'd like to suggest.
Will you make that the motion?
I'd like to move that we extend the contract six months under understanding.
May I have, and I have a second. Yeah, Margaret, you want something, you want her to say something further?
I just, I just wanted to say, if we extend this, if we extend this for six months, it gives us time to work out all of the details going forward, and I think that's a good idea.
Anything else?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is four, uh-oh. My show of hands, in favor, aye, and opposed. Motion carries three to two, Mr. Manager.
Okay.
And I would just like, I wanted to say for discussion that...
I'm sorry, I, I, I apologize.
I would think you, you can't, you can't ask the flag football team to provide information, and then, then you, you're not asking the soccer team to provide financials. It's nothing illegal about providing financials. You should be, they should be open. I would hope that in the future, that you're able to do this, and you can give us a timeframe of thirty to sixty days of providing some type of financials. We're not auditing you, we don't want to audit you, we just need to know what your...
I think, I think the problem we're getting in here now is semantics.
Sorry, Margaret.
I think the problem we're getting into is semantics. I'm not saying that I'm not willing to sit down and discuss the financials of Gateway Soccer. What I'm saying is, I'm not willing to just hand over the financials carte blanche. It's, it's a business, it's a private business. I'm not saying it's non-for-profit or not-for-profit, I'm not saying it has profit or it doesn't have profit. It seems to make it sound like I'm hiding something. What I'm not doing is any part of that.
Okay, understand this. Actually, it's easier to just hand over financials to Scott so that he can take care of it and provide us with the information we need to know, so that we can vote on this. We're not, if, we're not trying to have you in the meeting discussing your financials.
Why can't you ask me what you need, and I provide that to you?
You can provide, you, you can provide it, but if you want, we, we have to meet in an open forum, we have to meet, we cannot meet you, uh, all of our meetings are public.
Right.
So if you want some type of discretion or whatever, you can just hand over whatever financials that you would like to hand over to Scott. We're not trying to audit you.
Understood.
Okay? And then, then we can go further with how we want to proceed. It's just like if you, if you're paying rent somewhere.
Right.
They, they need to know what your pay is.
Right.
Okay? So then, we can't be fair, we want to be fair to you, so we don't, that's what we're asking.
And I, I'm very, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm not.
Okay, so is it possible that you can do that within the next thirty to sixty days?
I can have an open communication with Scott Connell about what you need and getting everything that I can, I can work with that, yeah.
And you can provide us something in writing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what, that's what we need.
Thank you very much. Board will stand in recess for ten minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, are we broadcasting?
Oh, no, no.
I just wanted to, I, I think I've seen you play it all well, when you played, you, you were with Brighton, and then you were with Chelsea. I, I'm a bounce fan, and I think you played it all well.
Yeah, oh my gosh, oh, yeah, when he was there, when, um, Danny Wilson was manager.
Well, we got to the...
Yeah.
My god, that was...
We signed Neil Redford from there.
Neil Redford was the best, probably the best guy we've ever had.
Yeah, we signed him, then we...
Really?
Yeah, it's like, yeah. It's changed, I mean, it's...
He scored at Anfield, you know, when, when the, when the Olympic...
Yeah, I mean, he was, when he went up, when he just came down, he scored a lot from midfield.
You went to Cardiff, didn't you?
Yeah, I went to, I was so close to, I gave most, I played most of my, all my, most ninety percent, it was still a little bit brighter.
Yeah.
So I was bright, bright and loud, et cetera, it's a child, it's right, and then I went to Cardiff, um, with, with Lenny.
Yes.
Um, because again, I still had a year to go on contract, it's like, it's, it's different now, um, but it's, it was a business, it was a hobby that I was pretty stupid, and I think it was become so much of a business now, and even started, started to have that revenue, the big TV money coming through.
Right, right.
So for me, it was always about the manager.
They're professional highway signs.
Child, and it was curbs, it was curbs, so curbs will let me go until I was at quite comfortable.
You're getting back to, what, the eight, nineties now?
Yeah, eighties.
When, when you were drilling up there?